We'll call to order the April 5th meeting of Morristown City Council. And we welcome those of you who are here with us today. We begin our meetings with an invitation followed by the pledge council member, Al Aherman, will lead us today.
I have a thank you here today for the event today. We've been through some bad hits. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to, uh, to, uh, work for this community, Lord. And thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on our community, Lord. And we ask you to bless our efforts and continue to bless our community. Lord, we love you and we thank you for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead the lead to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, council member, we need to check in. We have six present and, uh, we have a seventh on the way. So, uh, who will join us on the right? Uh, we have the, uh, March fifteenth minutes before you. Uh, if there are no corrections, I will say a motion would be accepted after it. Motion's centered, we have a second. We have a second, all the favors that I imposed in those minutes are approved. Um, we open the floor now for citizen comments about agenda items. Uh, these are about agenda items only. And the, uh, we also do not, uh, we're accepting the public hearing minutes. This isn't the time to talk about items that are on the, uh, public hearing portion. Uh, you will have opportunity to speak at that time. And we understand that maybe some folks here to address an item that is on the public hearing that up for adoption, uh, and will be recognized, uh, at that time. If there's anyone to wish us to address anything else on the agenda, the floor is now open.
Good afternoon. I'm Gordon Litz, nine twenty-four Colonial Drive. I'm the administrator of Morristown Hamlet Healthcare System. And on behalf of our organization, I just wanted to make a few comments about the health sponsorship agenda item. Covenant Health is committed to the city of Morristown as well as the surrounding communities that we serve. I think you can see that commitment with the building that's being constructed across the street from the new community center, the two new labor delivered rooms that we're about to open, and new cath lab that will be installed this summer. It will be a privilege, uh, to work with the city of Morristown in promoting health in our community. Uh, our plans for the space component are for cardiac rehab, for a health hub concept, which you see now coming, uh, around in a lot of Walgreens and CBS stores, as well as a space that will be used for education. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Gordon. Appreciate the work that Covenant Health has put into this and look forward to that relationship. Uh, council member, that contract is under, uh, item, uh, nine C two. Anyone else wish to be heard about an agenda item today? Period none, I'll close this portion of the, uh, agenda. And we'll move on to, we have an item under old business. Uh, this is the consideration to take, an item that had been tabled previously, uh, to take it off the table and, uh, put that public hearing in second reading of ordinance four, six, nine, seven, place it on the April nineteenth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two agenda. Uh, Josh, you want to remind us what that was about?
Uh, yes, sir. The exact request, the two parcels located on the eastern side of Highway twenty-five E from R two medium density residential and IV, or intermediate, uh, business district to RP one, the planned residential development district, was the board council in September for the introduction. However, that's going to chose to delay the public hearing due to some potential issues with the site. They recently reached back out to staff requesting to move forward with the rezoning and public hearing. Staff is asking city council to untable and place this item on where the required public hearing on the next, uh, city council agenda on April nineteenth. And I can go back and discuss any portion of this request if you want.
Uh, I think we understand all we need to do today is to remove it from the table and place it on the, uh, April nineteenth agenda under the, uh, public hearing. Uh, is there a motion to accept that recommendation? Motion Aherman, do we have a second? Need a second? Got a second? Any questions for Josh on this one? Period none, let's vote. That motion carries that it will be added to the, uh, April nineteenth agenda. We have four public hearings for today, the first of which is on ordinance four, seven, oh, two. This is entitled ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown under appendix B, asks to rezone Hamlet County Tax Parcel ID, the number you see before you, from office and medical professional to ma- median density residential, this being R two. The, uh, general location is shown on the attached exhibit in this lake bug. Uh, it is, uh, at, uh, seven seventeen West East North Street.
Yes, sir, mayor. Uh, as council may remember, this request comes from property owner Mike Bunche, who is asking the city to approve the rezoning of his property at seven seventeen West, uh, East Fifth North Street from office and medical professional to residential or R two. The applicant has been asked to renovate the existing office into a single family house located across the street from the former Lakeway Hospital. The property adjoins other single family uses and R two zoning. Therefore, the request is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. In March, the planning commission recommended sending request on to city council for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Now, this is a house that's previously been used for a doctor's office, correct?
It was a house, then turned into an office, now they're just turning it back into a house.
Is this a trend you're seeing with, um?
Yes, sir, it is.
Over home being returned to the residential?
Yes, sir. A good trend.
What do you think's bringing that down?
Probably the housing boom that we seem to be in.
It is unusual to see this type of town zoning too well. This goes from a more intense zoning district to a less intense, but I think that meets the, the needs of the community and does definitely respond to the need for quality housing. So, it's unusual in that regard, but I think it is something to work practice.
Yes, sir.
We'll open up the floor. This is a public hearing. Anyone has any comments on, on ordinance four, seven, oh, two? Again, that, if you wish to speak, identify yourself by name and address. And, uh, you have three minutes. The floor is now open. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, if there are no questions from council, I entertain a motion that this, uh, ordinance be adopted.
I do have a question, uh, mayor. Just out of curiosity, why would it, would that not, why would that would be R two instead of R one?
Um, primarily because surrounding areas are zoned R two and R one's zoning, um, requires a fifteen thousand square foot lot. And I think these are much smaller lots than they are in the city. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Period none, let's vote.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, we didn't get them. Now a second. Now any questions? We got the questions before the motions. Let's vote. We discriminated against.
Is it lighting up?
No, there's nothing like that.
Mayor, is it a yes vote or no? But we all did know. Let's do that here.
Yeah, let me. Busy at the moment. It's actually a yes vote. Technology in action. Okay. This one's approved.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next is, uh, a public hearing is for ordinance four, seven, three, entitled ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Morristown, appendix B, rezones the property described in a survey entitled West Park Commons. And the re- recorded in the deed book, El Platte, page twenty, and Hamlet County, three, rezoned from R three high density residential to RP one planned residential. The general location being shown on the, uh, attached exhibit, it's on Old Highway eleven E.
Yes, sir, mayor. This comes, uh, from developers Nick Lakens and Derek Wolfe, um, who have revised their plans for their property located on eleven E, uh, which adjoins, um, Alpha Elementary School. Originally rezoned to R three in two thousand eight, the owners were able to redesign the townhomes and add on an additional six units. While this is a small change, the configuration of the buildings and our pasts or staff's past zoning revisions, um, it warrants a change in zoning designation to RP one now, which is a planned residential district. The plan will have two access points, one along Old eleven E and one along St. John's Road. In addition, um, by rezoning to RP one, the re- the development will be required to have a minimum of twenty percent of open space. And the planning commission at their March meeting did recommend sending the request on to you for approval. Now, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for warning. If none, we'll open the, open the floor for the public hearing. Are there any, anybody who wishes to be heard on this one? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion that this be adopted. Motion's centered. We have a second. And we do have a second. Any questions or comments?
Just an observation, this is a zoning district, it's not very, there's not a lot of it across the city, if I remember correctly. And this is the one residential district that requires underground residential services that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So this, this is a, sort of a different animal from most of the development decisions.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And motion carries. Next is ordinance four, seven, oh, four. This is entitled an ordinance to annex certain territory and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Morristown. The annexation of the following Hamlet County Tax Parcels that you see written before you, highlighted on the exhibit A map, all of which fronts West Andrew Johnson Highway and are located between Britain Drive and Lake Shore Road.
Uh, yes, sir, mayor. This request comes from Mr. James Galway, who is requesting the annexation of his fifty-five acres located east of Britain acre subdivision. Um, the applicant, who is Perry Smith Development, had requested that the annexation include the properties be, um, if, annexed that the property, uh, properties be zoned as commercial along the West Andrew Johnson Highway frontage area with remainder to be zoned multifamily residential or R three. The applicant is wishing to build apartments to the rear of the property and keep the frontage along West AJ as commercial. All of the property is within the urban growth boundary area and is contiguous to the current city limits. Um, I'll speak a bit to the plant, to the plan of services, which is the next item. Um, they do, they will indicate that sanitary sewer and electrical services will be provided by Morristown Utilities and Alpha Talbot will provide the water. Um, and in March, the planning commission recommended sending a request on to you for approval. I will say this, in the past week or so, the planning department has received, um, a petition with names from several of the adjoining neighborhood and properties that are opposed to this request. And I believe that, uh, I was ma- I was able to copy all the city, uh, council members on that. Um, also, I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this is only, um, the annexation portion of the process. If this should go through, the developer would be, um, required to submit to us a site plan, which will also go to the planning commission for approval. And the entire, um, neighborhood would be, um, alerted as to the time and date of that meeting as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
May I have the, uh? Just a moment, we will be, just a moment. Sorry, sir. You'll be recognized just a moment. Uh, council, any questions of warning?
Boy, we were talking about this earlier. Can you, um, tell us how the property would be at entrance, how the entrance and exits would work on this piece of property?
Um, yes, ma'am, there are either one or two stub outs from the adjoining neighborhoods that go to this property. However, staff would in no way, shape, or form recommend that those be used for access points, rather all access points ingress, egress would have to be made from West Andrew Johnson Highway.
Open the floor for the public hearing, because we understand there are a number of folks who wish to be heard, uh, on public hearings. If you come to the podium, uh, gives you name and address, you have three minutes to speak. This is not a question and answer session, it's the council listening to your comments. And the council, uh, will reserve their comments while all of the comments are heard. So, the floor is now open. Who wishes to be heard? Sir, you stood up first, so I'll give you the first shot if you would like to.
One of my main concerns is, uh, my name's Robert Craig, sixty-five thirty-one Golden Gate Court, that's on the C. Uh, my property is across the backside of this proposal being made. Uh, we love Talbot while we've been in Talbot. And I don't know, you know, we go ahead and you all annex this without having anything from this guy showing how he's going to go about the building. Now, where's he going to place the sewer pump? The sewer pump's behind us. Is he coming through the neighborhood with it? Where's his access to this new neighborhood that he's going to build? Where's he going in there at? All that property's closed. The Wayfair wants to sell their property, they don't allow access. And that's all I have to say, just a point. Now, I hope that you all will notify everyone in the subdivision, because when this first come up, there wouldn't be but a handful of people notified and joined that property on the backside. And the whole subdivision is going to be involved in the traffic, the people that live there in that new community. Now, what's that new community look like? Do I need to sell my property now and get the heck out? Because that's been brought up by several of the neighbors. We don't know what these apartments are going to be. Thank you for your time.
Who's next? Oh, what else? Okay, if there's someone else coming forward, uh, I'll close the, uh, public hearing portion of this, uh, uh, for this particular ordinance. Uh, because of the, uh, the charter of the, of the city of Morristown, uh, when there are a certain percentage of property owners adjacent a piece of land that is to be annexed that voice opposition to that, it requires more than just a majority vote at the council. It requires a four-fifths margin of, of, uh, approval, uh, which would mean there needs to be six votes instead of four for this, uh, for this to be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we postpone this until the full council can take it out.
The motion's postponed till we have a full council. Is there a second to that? Oh, we do have a second. Any comments? Let's vote.
Is that because we don't think we're going to get the right vote?
It's because we don't have a full council. Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And this vote is delayed. And that also negates the, the next public hearing, because that's the plan of services. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's correct. Those will go ahead and, sorry, unless you have approval for the annexation, you do not need to refer to that.
Okay. The next time we go to awarding of bids and contracts, first is the approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement with the Hamlet County Government and the longer state community colleagues for the Heim Brook radio signal site.
Uh, before you leave the agreement that allows us to move forward, which is important communications power for the, uh, improvements to the radio system to serve our public information. Commissioner Kirksey has been, uh, been instrumental in coordinating and facilitating this project and the, uh, uh, the contract before he simply lays out the, the cost sharing arrangements and the sharing or for the Heim Brook power sign, uh, which has been educated recently that Heim Brook has an E on Brook, which I had not done, done in the past, that, uh, Commissioner Kirksey is here to have any questions. But we, uh, would recommend approval of the project.
Is there a motion to accept that recommendation? So, the motion's been ago, we have a second. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of the sponsorship of lease agreements between the city of Morristown and Covenant Hill for the Morristown Landing.
Uh, this is a set of agreements that are, are dovetailed together, they go hand in hand. As you heard from, uh, Gordon earlier, this is a cooperative agreement between, uh, the city and Covenant. I think it's going to be an outstanding partnership and they'll, they'll have the presence alongside which will help us to, uh, continue to get improved of overall wellness initiatives with the landing. Uh, we are very, very happy that we've been able to work with, uh, with Covenant and Gordon in particular to get this agreement for you. We recommend approval.
We have a motion to accept that recommendation. The motion's suspended. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or comments?
I think we should, uh, thank Gordon and the hospital for what they're doing. This is going to make the landing even more important and valuable and part of our community. Thank you, Gordon.
Anyone else?
Yes, I think it's an excellent partnership and it's certainly benefited our citizens who will, uh, not only use this program, but will use the landing facilities as well. And I'd like to thank both the city and the, and the hospital for working as hard and diligently over the period of time that they did to create this agreement that we're working on today.
Anyone else? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. Next is the approval of the inspection and maintenance agreement with carlo construction for property described as Stone Haven Phase Three here at Morristown.
Uh, council's aware that, uh, as part of the stormwater management system, there are maintenance requirements that are put in by the developer. This agreement lays out the responsibility of the developer and the city clearly, so we understand where each, uh, responsibility lies, was done a number of times, as indicated with this being Phase Three, we've done that a number of times. And the development, we would recommend approval of the agreement for you.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendations? So, the motion's suspended. We have a second. We have, need a second. Got a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of Southeast Industrial LLC entering a sublease agreement for the storage of King Air aircraft recommended by the, uh, Morristown Regional Airport Commission at their meeting on March sixteenth of this year.
Uh, council may recall that we've entered into an agreement with SEI for the construction of three hangars on the airport airfield, uh, their main hangar and then two additional hangars, which will be sublet. Uh, the lease agreement, as it was initially played out, provided for those, the subleases to house jet aircraft. The proposal for a King Air, who's not a jet aircraft, however, is a very substantial and significant aircraft, that it is not in keeping with the language in the lease systems required. Therefore, we, uh, have gone to the fixed base operator of the airport, the airport commission, as well as others working for advice. We all recommend that we allow for the housing of this aircraft in that is in keeping with the spirit of the agreement. And we would recommend approval of, uh, housing this aircraft under the lease.
Do we have a motion to accept this recommendation? So, the motion, Aherman, we have a second. We do have a second. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval of a policy procedure for the administrative approval of subleases at the Southeast Industrial LLC hangars in certain scenarios. This is recommended also by the Morristown Regional Airport Commission at that March sixteenth meeting.
Having run into this situation, we thought about the, the need to streamline the process to allow for expedited rental and leasing of the hangars as long as they're in keeping with the, the spirit of the agreement. The proposed change here would allow for collaboration of the airport commission chair, fixed base operator, and, and city administration in reviewing, making sure that it meets those, the requirements that we require. All three to come into agreement that it is in keeping with the agreement. If not, it will come back through the process we've just gone through with the King Air aircraft. We feel like this is a better way to manage the property. We recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to accept this recommendation? So, the motion carries. We have a second. We do have a second. Any other questions or comments on this one?
I, I would like to make a clarification. Um, are you saying that the city administration, the chairman of, uh, the mission, and?
The fixed base operator?
Would make the decision zone?
We would collaborate, make sure that it's in keeping with the, the spirit. And if they, if everyone agreed, we would move forward. If we failed to have an agreement among those three, we'd come back for the full commission and.
So, council wouldn't have any say-so on leases? Didn't it be that, that three?
That's correct. In, in order to facilitate the process and keep things moving, we, uh, uh, you would put your, uh, kind of delegate your responsibilities to those people to keep things moving rather than waiting for an advertised meeting of the airport commission and council.
Without any discussion, I would support that. Any other comments?
That's what I brought up for, is that it's, uh, and that's why I mentioned that. and that's why I mentioned that in our pre, pre-agenda meeting that then this allows anybody else who has a lease to sublease. I mean, it's, but it would be case-by-case basis is what they were talking about.
No, that is not the case. This is specifically having to do with the SEI hanger lease, which is unique in that the, the lease provides for three hangers as opposed to just one. All the other ground leases on the airfield house one, uh, aircraft that is the owner's aircraft. So if, if the situation is unusual and that we have multiple hangers controlled by SEI under the multi-hanger lease agreement. Andrew's the one that developed the, the process and procedure and is much more eloquent in explanation about the, uh, the intent and layout of the approval. But if Andrew, if you want to come up and kind of explain what the, the game train would be for, uh, doing additional comments in the future.
The, um, our intention of the intent in the language of the lease with SEI was to help protect the FBO from, you know, the possibility of customers with aircraft already on the airport getting poached away from the FBO to be housed in these hangers. Uh, the reality is these hangers are much, much larger. Uh, intended to house jet aircraft or aircraft the size of like the King Air was approved in the last, uh, in the last council action item. So the, the intention of the procedure that we set up or proposed is, um, if presented with such an opportunity again, say a King Air or, or even a jet aircraft, it doesn't really suggest any sublease at those SEI hangers would have to come through, uh, for the approval. Um, we would approach first the FBO to be sure that they did, they understood what was being offered to be sublet there. Was this a small, you know, single-engine prop plane that the FBO has plenty of space to provide for? Or is this a plane that was much larger that was not something the FBO could serve? Which is like King Air, the FBO could not have served that even if they did have space. Um, and if the FBO did have any objection, then we would put the brakes on the process right there and go through that longer process, go to the airport commission first, see what they said, come to the commi, the city council and, 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 you know, the plan is set. But if FBO has no objection, then in our mind, there was really no reason to slow down the process. Because unlike some lease arrangements that come to the council, this is not a lease arrangement where we're negotiating the lease. That's with SEI. Uh, the city already has its arrangement with SEI based on the ground lease. So if there's not, we're not like negotiating additional terms or anything like that. It's just a matter of whether or not we feel it's appropriate that the aircraft being presented is appropriate in that space. That's.
When you're six five.
It's a thirty, thirty-year lease.
And when you said to present a proposal, planes from the FBO, you're, you're basically saying is Southeast does not go into competition with fixed base operator, protects, takes a fixed base operator. Is that, tell, tell me what it is.
I'm a little, I'm not totally against it. I just don't understand it. Well, I'd make a decision. My point is, and correct me if I'm out in left field here. If the city administrator had an airplane and he wanted the special stipulations, then all he would have to do is talk the other two people into it. I'm not saying he would, but I'm saying the possibility is there. And then there's a deal made. And the, the airport commission didn't know about it? City council didn't know about it? I think it would jeopardize the position of those people. Am I wrong? Am I wrong in what I'm looking?
I think in that process, we're going to be asking what exactly is being allowed to be stored in that hangar.
Right.
So there's going to be some sort of reasonable standard to, is this a larger aircraft? Is this a jet aircraft? If the FBO doesn't have space for it and FBO can't support. We're going to go to the FBO and ask them, do you have objection to this? So if you're worried about anybody making any kind of side deal there, it would, I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting this in case.
I'm, I'm not either.
FBO and SEI and in, in either case, we're, the city doesn't stand to gain or lose in that scenario.
Yeah, but we certainly, I, I, I know a hanger in another county that has nothing but a hot tub in the middle.
And we would certainly not approve of that, even if the FBO was okay with it.
But that's a true, you know, and it's what, and he knows that was his hot tub.
So do you want, uh, would you want language to where the, the airport commission had to give approval?
And Mayor, we do, uh, this, at, at, at kind of a stopgap, I guess. Even in this expedited process, we do state that at the next airport commission meeting, we will bring a report of any lease that was done under that process. I feel like if there was a problem with it, at that point, our commission, our commission said, you know, that we need to assume that policy.
I guess where I want you to clarify my position is the council leads every two weeks. Why wouldn't it just come to the council? Instead of going to the airport commission and do it with the council with the understanding that the commission will find out about it and they can vote on it at the time they can? Does that make sense?
Let me, one point of clarification. As the lease agreement stands, if SEI brings another potential tenant tomorrow and it has a jet engine, it automatically qualifies and this process is not necessary. It's only going to be given arbor, aberration from the type of aircraft that we get in this situation where we got this kind of rate. Is that a fair assessment?
One section of the lease agreement says jet aircraft, one section just says sublease here.
So why are we just, the lease?
I'm sorry.
Why aren't we just saying aircraft? And take out jet engine and take out prop engines and take out, make sure that it's an airplane?
The intent of the lease was to make sure that the aircraft in these hangers were larger aircraft, larger fuel users, and they were not in competition with the T-hangers in operation at the FBO. That was final language and what it is. And getting into application gets a little messier than when you're drafting a, a lease agreement in the actual.
Can we amend the lease to be a little bit more specific, maybe by size?
I'm sure we, I'm sure we did.
Uh, we couldn't go to multi-engine because they're single-engine jets, so that wouldn't work. But we could do it by a size specific enough that it wouldn't fit in a T-hanger.
And I think we talked about that, but I think we didn't necessarily want to open up that lease agreement as maybe, you know, then, okay, while we're opening this up, let's also talk about this and this because we have a very good lease agreement.
Okay, so I guess I'm clarifying myself now. This has nothing to do with city council. This has to do with the commission, the airport commission, and who they're giving authority to, to make those decisions. But we have to approve it.
The lease agreement says the city approved. So in theory, and in practice, my opinion, most things that flow through from the airport commission to the city council, unless it's, has said specifically that the airport commission has been approved. But the lease agreement says.
Well, the only point I'm trying to make is that every person on this council knows that I have concerns about giving away authority from this council to anybody else. And, you know, that's my concern. And I'll live with it either way. I mean.
Actually, isn't that what we did with, with the creation of the airport commission?
Yes. Well, if we did, why didn't they come back to us for approval? Because we have to approve it. Now we're, we, we started the commission and said that commission has got to come back to the council for approval. Now we're saying, okay, we've got this commission, but they don't have to come back to council anymore. So we're giving away authority. I do understand the aspect of, of the timing. I understand that. And that needs to be resolved. We don't need to be waiting three months for somebody to make a decision. But my question is, is why couldn't that be made at the city council meeting that, that comes every two weeks?
Would that make the airport commission feel like the decisions were already been made before them by the city council?
Or, or am I more concerned about city council feeling like that three people have made decisions from the council and the commission?
Well, I think that's why we should amend it where it requires airport commission approval on the front end, but what you're saying, airport commission approval will come after on the back end and, and they'll, they change it. They don't like it when it gets to them, right?
No, I think it's, I, I would, and I agree on the city turning on this, I think the city council is the, the prime authority. So it's a matter of the city council having made that decision and we just report back with airport commission that that decision was made.
The last thing I will say about it is I, 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 I understand what's going on and I think it's a good thing. I would just like a little more clarification of what's happening. So I would really like, if we, if you don't have a situation coming up, maybe a clarification about what we're doing and vote on this the next meeting. Bring it back up the next meeting. And I don't question the integrity of any member of the commission or city adminis, well, that is already.
Be careful, Anthony.
I would agree and, uh, maybe, uh, A. Herman and Smith would, would draw their motion and amend it on the other. Give us more time to look at it because if you're talking about, then the sublease has already been approved, but then you find either of the bodies that don't like it, then you're, it's a messy situation to go back and take the lease away, sublease away.
Well, I don't know who's not going to like it. I mean, if you're negotiating and you agree on it, who doesn't like it?
Well, he's saying that's the option.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, throwing it out to anybody if it's, if we're concerned about, are, are we concerned about who's, who's got to say?
I'm always kind of concerned about who has to say.
You know?
I mean, you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want the council taking, trying to take authority away from the mayor or the mayor taking authority away from the council. And we.
I'm not sure the mayor's got much authority, but the council, there's nothing to add. Well, if, if you want to play, because you, you need some more clarification.
That's all I'm asking for. I, I probably will vote for it. I just would like to have some clarification.
And I amend the motion to table it, tell them that.
All right, you okay with that? All right. Let's, the motion's withdrawn and the new motion is to table the matter.
Do you have a date?
Just the next meeting. Postpone the next meeting.
Is there a motion to postpone the next meeting?
So.
Motion can go second.
I think they, they were through and said they would do it.
Oh, I see. That's true. Your motion is approved. Ryan?
Yes. All right. We ready to vote? Let's vote. Vote to postpone this approval. And we have, uh, the, ask for the approval of declares six vehicles from various departments to surplus and sell them on the Gov. Deal or dispose of it in a proper fashion.
Unless the vehicles is included in your agenda packet, we think there will be some interest in the Estados, some larger pieces of clearance. We feel like we can get a return on Gov. Deals. We recommend.
Your motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay.
Motion center. We have a second. We have a second. Got a second. Any questions?
I think Gov. Deals is one of the best things that's ever happened to the city government.
You want to make that part of your second?
No, just make the sound.
Let's vote. And that motion carries. We have, uh, two, uh, boards that we are, uh, considering for reappointment. These are both city council appointments. Uh, one is the, uh, Hamblin County Board of Equalization, a representative on a two-year term. Uh, has been Robert Russell. He has agreed to, uh, uh, serve another term. Uh, if there is a motion to, uh, make that, oh. Motion A. Herman, we have a second. Got a second. Any other nominations that anyone wishes to make? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. Let's vote. And Robert is, uh, returned to the Board of Equalization and we appreciate his willingness to, uh, serve. And we also have, uh, um, reappointments or, or appointments to the Construction Board of Adjustments, Appeals, and the Examiners. This is for a three-year term that would expire day first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, Robert, uh, T. Russell, uh, Jim Clark and Jody Wigginton, uh, have, their terms are expiring. Each has agreed to return for another three-year term if the council so moves on those three appointments. If so, I'll entertain a motion.
So Robert T. is Robert's same person?
Yes.
I don't, I'm answering with that.
I think it is.
Is it the same Robert Russell?
Yes.
Okay. He didn't want to have his initial used on the Board of Equalization, I guess.
Oh.
Well, I can understand that. Uh, any other nominations?
I think we reappoint Russell, Clark, and Wigginton.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And those three are returned to the Board of Adjustments, Construction Adjustments. Uh, we have a couple of new items. One with the police department, the other the fire department. Chief Oliver, who wants to go first?
Thank you, sir. I'm making a request to make a motion to backfill that corporal position in our patrol division. You have the eligibility roster in your packet. I'm prepared to make a recommendation from the three individuals which are eligible, if you so wish.
Who is that recommendation?
My recommendation would be Ron Sanchez.
Ron Sanchez has been, uh, proposed by the chief. Is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
No.
Motion A. Herman, we have a second. Any questions to the chief? Hearing none. Let's vote. That motion is approved.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And Chief, thank you. See, if we'll hover at it, we'd like to pass along conversations from, uh, from the council, I think, on, uh, the men from our fire department who responded to the brush fires in Sierra County. I know you've got some, uh, and a truck and, and, you know, logistics overseer. All getting time for that and that was certainly, uh, no small matter and, and certainly appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm requesting council appointment to fill a vacancy at, following the, at Captain Chief, right?
Is that recommendation?
Anthony Lewis.
Anthony Lewis, he's been recommended by the chief. Is there a motion to approve that recommendation? Motion Smith. We have a second. We do have a second. Any questions? Uh, Chief, thank you. Hearing none. Let's vote.
Thank you.
Anthony Lewis is the, is the deputy chief. Can we go to the city administrators' report, Tom?
Uh, a few things to bring to your attention today. Uh, first, if you've not had a chance to, uh, swing by Fulton Hill Park recently, uh, the crews around here are building that new trail. We're making real progress. It's really starting to get, uh, public works. It's got a lot of, uh, elbow grease and equipment involved in that. There's been a very favorable reaction from the public and will be a major improvement to the park. And, and we're very excited about it. I would urge you to go by during nice weather and take a look if you're about to get that, uh, ready to get. Also, with regard to our, uh, parks and recreation, we've got our, uh, Easter scramble event. I just forgot. If you've not picked up one of the, uh, of the forms, we've got clues scattered throughout the parks. If you go out and read the clues, you complete the, uh, the scramble form. You can turn it in on the twelfth for the, uh, Easter egg hunt. And you, we placed in a drawing for, uh, for some, uh, some prizes there. It's, uh, another opportunity to take advantage of getting out in our parks and enjoying the, the better weather that's coming. Uh, and then finally, last week, the board of regents had their annual awards, uh, presentations and Morristown fared very well. Uh, first, the mayor was able to go down and pick up the award for philanthropy, the chancellor's award. This recognizes the city's, uh, donation of property on Dyce Street for the, uh,
for the, uh, uh, expansion of TCAT and the new exciting areas that we have for advanced manufacturing that that brings to, to Moorestown. Also, we, uh, the TBR, uh, confirmed the appointment of Suzanne Cox, who's been a long-term employee at, at TCAT to be our new president there and, and carrying forward the programs that we have at that, uh, at that facility and our workforce development. And then finally, Walter State was recognized as the community college of the year statewide. Uh, that, uh, certainly is something that they're proud of and we're very proud of for them. As a whole, looking at all of that, that's a, a real endorsement of what Moorestown's doing to workforce development. All three aspects of making sure that we have workers ready to, uh, lead into our local industry and businesses. And I think overall, it was a shot in the arm that has long time for the city to come in spotlight from statewide. And that's our report for that.
Thank you, Tony.
We come to a portion of the agenda, which, uh, has not always been a portion of this agenda. Uh, it was added back, I think around twenty-ten or so, uh, to address topics that are not part of the agenda uh, with folks who, who want to, uh, speak to the council about things that are on their mind. Uh, and the, uh, and we've come to this part, uh, each, uh, council meeting, uh, for the assignment is, uh, uh, to, to, to deal with items not on the agenda. The, uh, again, the speaking requirements, you identify yourself by name and address. You have three minutes to speak and it's not a question and answer session. This is a listing, uh, portion that we have added to this agenda and the floor is now open. So you know what, come forward, we'll.
Yes, I do. Sorry about that. I'm here today to ask for a more.
Yeah, identify yourself and address, I'm sorry.
Louis Chan, three sixteen East First North Street. I'm here to ask for a more open and responsible and responsive government built on the current foundation, which is not too bad. I've already asked some individual council before, but this time I would like to ask for the whole board except for missing Mr. Bevan, that we find a way to upgrade the contact information with the citizen resident of the town in the form of text or email address. Having the cities to start with the city to during any contact with the individual citizen resident for it to be taxed legal, for example, a traffic ticket or whatsoever, or someone for the building here. Open a format to ask for the citizen to voluntarily provide to their e-contact information. And then the city have to fulfill to contact a citizen in that format if they provide it to be qualified as fully legally informed the citizen for whatever the reason. Because in my personal responsible, I mean, in my experience, because I never received a certified letter during the COVID period, that the USPS do not have to have to receive and sign a certified letter. For that, I missed the chance to respond to the son and challenging their standing, uh, their, their argument to tear down the building. And therefore they have a chance to be arbitrarily grant me some building to keep and tear down the other building. Grant me the building in the worst condition, harder to fix, but let me keep the one that's easier to, but not letting me to keep the one to easy to fix and cheap to fix. The building is gone, but as I said, with or without the buildings, I said it months ago, with or without the building, this metal would not go away. Not because that I'm not rest responsible, not because that I'm not going to unreasonable. It's because that I was the one taking every punch from the city and the city did not contact, con, conduct, carry out the whole process correctly. And most recently, I found out that the contract for the theater to dump.
Thank you, Mr. Chan.
I will come back next week.
Time is up. Anyone else wish to be heard? Here you're done, we'll close this portion, uh, of the, uh, agenda and go to, uh, comments from, uh, mayor or council members. We did have a finance committee meeting, uh, this afternoon. Vice Mayor Petticoat chairs that committee. Would you like to address, uh, response to that?
Yes, we had a good meeting. The main topic on our agenda was the, uh, nonprofits. Uh, we may have a recommendation to our country for nonprofits. I, I wish we could have filled all the requests of the nonprofits because they're all very, very important to take care of our community and those people who need to be taken care of and all of the things that they offer. But, uh, sometimes it's just impossible to be able to do that. We try to make sure that everybody's included. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on any item?
Mayor, you know, we, um, our employees are very important to us and our employees, especially those who've been here for a very long time become family. And I meant to mention, when I came on board, Carl Gilbert was the director of Public Works. And I think we need to recognize Carl passed away. It's been over a month now, and I meant to mention that when, um, when that happened. And many of you all who were here know what an integral part, I know Paul, you, you knew Paul, you knew Carl Ritter. Um, and then we, just this last week, Sharon Monroe, many of you all remember Sharon. Sharon was here in the administrative office and she also served many years in the planning department. And I don't think I, and, and we can go on, and if there's anybody else that was a, a director or just an employee that you can think of. And I know we just recently had the, the bureau for deputy chief, uh, the fire department team. And it's, uh, you know, a, a family there. So I'd just like for us to take a minute to think about the contributions that these individuals have made. And we were talking about that earlier. Whoever's here, those decisions that are made are not just for today, they are forever. And so I think that's why we need to be very mindful in our decisions and the, and the discussion that we have is always hopefully moving us forward. So if we could just take a second, just a moment of silence, please.
All right, let's bow, or here's a little kind of global silence for those folks. Amy. Thank you, Kate, for that. Any other council member have any comments there, wish? Counsel, we do have a pre-work session afterwards that Steve will be leading. Uh, if there are any other items to come forth, counsel, I'll entertain a motion that we can adjourn.